Everybody ready? Calling this meeting to order, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Rovell.
Here.
Strumelob Burke. Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, May 20, 2021 additions of the Belleville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall Bulletin Board and copies are in file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I know. So, I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of June 22. The first thing we have on our agenda after the pledge of allegiance is a quick presentation from our representatives at PSENG. If they're here, I do see them. You do have a PowerPoint or some kind of slide? Are we ready for that? So just make sure he's got a microphone over there. Do you want to work it from over there? Yeah, could do that too. There we go.
So, good evening. Appreciate you all making some time for us and we will be, we'll make sure this is short and brief. Today, we wanted to discuss the Washington Street Station that we're proposing. This station would be located right next to the bowling alley that's currently on Washington Avenue. Who I have with me today just before I get started.
Tommy, Jack.
Okay, we'll just scroll it up. So, so today before I get started, my name is Joe McQueen. I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for PSENG. I'm somewhat of a liaison or concierge, if you will, from the utility to the town. I also have Gene Rotunda. He's our licensing permitting guru. And we also have Tom Flaherty, who's also, he's our project manager and he'll be the one overseeing the project once we're underway. Today, just really quickly, we're going to go over the project overview, the timeline along with schedule, as well as how we traditionally introduce these types of projects and then see if there's any questions from anyone at the end. So, you know, just went through the folks that we have here. The station as proposed before, we're looking at the right-of-way. Currently, this location is a utility-owned right-of-way. We have transport towers that go through that way. This is the location that we're proposing to build this particular substation at this location. And, you know, with this substation, the goal ultimately is to ensure that we can create greater reliability and resiliency, redundancy for both, you know, for both Belleville as well as the surrounding community. We understand, we've been looking at a lot of load data and what we see is that there's a lot of load growth and we've seen some congestion and things like that. And what we want to do is ensure that we have the right infrastructure in place to support the type of growth and development that's occurring here in town as well as the surrounding communities. And we found a way to kind of do that where these stations don't look like what they used to, where there was somewhat eyesore to the community. These things are become more integral and, you know, we'll work closely with the town to ensure that what we're proposing is in line with the community and what the town expects. So, what I want to do now, I want to also bring up Tom. Tom's our project manager. He's going to talk about some of the project need as to why we're looking to do this station in addition to some of the, you know, what you all should expect with respect to the schedule and timelines.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you all again for giving us a few minutes. My name is Tom Flaherty. I am the PSENG Project Manager for this substation. The reason we're looking to build this station is we have some overload conditions in the existing equipment and systems around this area that we're looking to relieve with this the substation. So, we expect the benefits to this are going to be increased capacity of the area, the system in the area, and also, we're going to be relieving those overloads. And the impact is going to be fewer, fewer outages, fewer blackouts for the neighbors and, and increased capacity for, for load growth in, in time to come. So, as you can see, in, in some of the, the neighbors in the area of the substation that are going to be impacted by this, this new work, there's everything from churches to businesses to residences to fire departments and so on. So, there's a lot of people that would be impacted favorably by this. As Joe said, we're, we're looking to locate this station in the PSENG right-of-way that's located between Washington Avenue and, and Union Avenue. So, the, on the east side, it's right across from the ShopRite supermarket. Essentially, what we're doing is, as Joe said, there's, there's transmissions right-of-way in existing already and we're going to drop transmission voltage lines into the substation and then out of the station will be 13 KV circuits that will be distributed. We'll be building new circuits throughout the neighborhood to relieve the load capacity from, from the overloaded stations. Okay. So, again, as I said, we're going to be building, as part of this, over the, over the years to come, we'll be building circuits in and around this area that will allow us to relieve the overloads in the, the stations that are serving the community now. So, again, the benefits are we're going to have a lot, a lot higher capacity and the reliability of the, the system is going to be much greater than it is now, just because of the, the redundancy in the equipment that we're proposing to put in. As you can see here, we have a variety of, of screens that we, we have been typically installing to, to, to kind of screen the equipment and have, have a favorable impact from the neighbors in the area. You can see we have different facades that we can look at. This, this is a typical one. It's called the forever green fence that kind of camouflages everything and blends into the, the background pretty well. So, so that's, that's kind of the, the background on what we're, we're looking to do and we look forward to working with you and hopefully you'll, you'll have some, some things that we can consider and we're looking forward to working with you guys, so.
So, and also, just thanks, Tom. And just to add to that, we showed kind of two different designs, both a green fence as well as a brick, a brick wall and kind of the only difference between the two, we just want to illustrate how creative we can somewhat get. So, you know, ultimately, we know there'll be additional conversations we'll have with the town to kind of drill down exactly on what best fits that area, but we want to just demonstrate the variety of what we can do based upon what best fits that area. Also, in addition to that, we, we understand that, you know, community concern around building these things are quite grand and we'd never want to, you know, take those types of concerns lightly. So, along with that, we also have an outreach piece that we also do whenever we are working on these types of stations. So, you know, as part of this, we will also be engaged in the community, whether it be through workshops. We have an outreach specialist, Jason Passerino. He's not here today, but ultimately, anytime we're doing these types of stations, we're, we're definitely want to, you know, have these community sessions, speak to those concerns, also, you know, provide construction and schedule updates so that folks know what the impacts are to them directly, as well as understand kind of, you know, what we're doing as far as a, a project timeline and, and how those things may impact their day-to-day lives. So, in, in all, we're not looking to be a hindrance to the community while we construct this, as well as after the fact, once the station is in. And, you know, we, we're aware that, you know, anytime we bring any type of change, there's some concerns about, you know, what's that look, you know, how's that impact the, the community feel, the view, the optics? And, you know, we want to ensure that we'll, you know, work to be in line with any type of compliance issues. And I also wanted to bring Gene up just to see if, you know, if there's any points he wanted to make with respect to land use or any concerns that may, you know, usually, that usually comes up with these types of projects.
Yeah, so you saw the, the different facades that we could do with the project. One of them, the forever green fence, that's a computer-generated version. We'll have a better version when we make a presentation, but it looks like a giant hedge and that can go much higher. We like those because...
Looks more like a prison to me.
Well, that's the color they're using right now, so...
The barbed wire, it's the...
Yeah, the barbed wire, the barbed wire won't be on there, so the, the cat operator decided to put that on the top. It'll look like a green fence, really like a hedge. You know, the, the masonry walls are different, but they're a little lower. So, there's some different options to screen the equipment from the view of the neighbors. Now, idea is to do as a buffer, because underneath the transmission lines and these locations, we can't put evergreens, you know, not permitted for our use by the, you know, our regulations. So, this is the type of approach that they're taking. It'll be at the Board of Adjustment for Use Variants, because the use is really not permitted in any zone other than the open space zone in, in town now. So, we'll have to make a presentation at that board. We'll also have to comply with the site plan and stormwater and all those issues.
So, so kind of just in wrapping up, we're right at our time. You know, we, we understand, you know, in addition to this, that, you know, if there are concerns or questions around aesthetics with respect to vegetation, if we can do anything front to kind of beautify that, those are things that, you know, aren't up for debate and those are things that we can add to the area to enhance and improve it. And, you know, with that, you know, that's pretty much our presentation. So, you know, if there's any questions or anyone, you know, we're willing to take them, but at, but at this time, we'll, we'll definitely look for additional follow-up with the town to discuss the station and, and opportunities in further detail.
Okay, I believe the manager had a question, maybe? I, I need you, I need you on the mic, sir.
How do we notify the neighborhood? Can you do that with a letter? And is there a public hearing?
Yes, so, so prior to even, so prior to even going before site plan or anything, there's a notice to, we have to notice, I believe there's a 90-foot, what is it, 90, 200 feet notice for all the residents, but in addition to that, PSENG, we notice the residents. So, all the, the residents that are adjacent on both sides of the right-of-way, any, you know, we'll be reaching out to them just to see if they have any concerns or questions and we'll do that directly or in partnership with the town if that's the, you know, if that's the course.
Thank you.
Any members of the council have a question? This goes from Washington to Union on the Nutley border. Washington to Union.
I, I live almost on it, so.
There's a big elevation.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
You have a question?
No, not a question. It's just I want to thank you for coming in last week to meeting with, meet with Councilman Cazarelli, myself and System Manager and Chief Metakini. Great meeting and I know this is going to come in front of the planning board.
Zoning.
So, thank you. Zoning and planning. Thank you.
I just had a quick thing. I suspect you guys aren't involved with ripping up our streets or any of that stuff, right?
So...
We beat them up already. We got them that, yeah, we got them.
Yeah, so, so we, we do have a separate program and I'll, I'll wrap this up. We have a gas, gas system modernization program, which we're replacing leaking gas pipes. That is part of us and we'll be looking to, you know, pave curb to curb, you know, so we get brand-new streets. We'd like to add to the tax burden of the residents, but yes, we...
That would be wonderful.
That's us.
Thank you.
Joe, real quick too, and one idea for the renderings too, which we're, a new thing we're starting to do here in Belleville is do some murals. So, maybe instead of just a plain wall, that could be like a concrete wall that we have, like a local artist do a mural on, to face in Washington Avenue. Something like that. So, keep that in mind also.
Yeah.
Absolutely. This is the type of feedback we're actually looking for, so what we can discuss to upgrade...
Right, yeah, just on the, on the Washington side. On the other side can be just brick and, and hedging and whatever you want to do, because no one will really see that. But on the Washington side, if we want to do a...
That sounds awesome. We'll, we'll be reaching out to see if you guys have any particular artists or any ideas and...
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Take a look at 21. Right, as you, as you come down, is it homes or?
Yeah.
Yeah, down homes.
Coming down homes, down homes to Main.
Very cool.
You'll see, you know, this mural of cherry blossoms.
So, so just kind of, so what we'll do, just kind of go on there, we'll, we'll reference that and through our future conversations, we'll try to integrate that into our...
That'll be cool.
We'll be ahead of the game on that one.
Cool.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. So, the next item on our agenda is executive session. We are going to go into executive session for the following reasons: potential litigation, personnel, and redevelopment. I need a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No. At this point, unfortunately, we do have to clear the room with the exception of our professionals and anybody presenting.
Where's the thermostat?
It doesn't work. It's either on or off.
20 years.
20, longer than that.
We want to pay...
Longer than that.
35,000, one contractor.
Never, ever, ever worked, but...
One thing you can do.
What can I do? I'll make a face up.
Just gotta turn them upside down?
Yeah.
Just turn them upside down, right? So, I thought hit us, right? I'll try.
Mark, what are you doing, Mark?
Freeze, that's what I'm doing.
That's why I bought the jacket, I know. I leave it in the car all the time.
It's a shame.
We're just going to give another second, everybody. We came back from executive, going to give another second. We're just going to give another minute or so.
They got to change the meter?
Could take four minutes.
Right.
Okay, everybody, sorry about that. We are going to go forward with our meeting. We were just in executive session. We took no action. We discussed various different topics. We adjourned that executive session and now we're back here for item number six, report of the manager. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First, let me say that Friday, July 2nd will be the, the last day that residents would have to be directed to the site entrance and have to sign in, have the temperature taken. When we come back after the holiday on Tuesday, July 6th, the Town Hall will be open without...
The then mayor and council embarked on a multi-phase renovation of the stadium complex. The first phase, of course, was the new varsity baseball field. And for, you know, for the better part of 16 years, I've been very proud of that field. I've been going to a tremendous amount of games because of, you know, friends, children, everything else. And I was even prouder when we named it for Coach George Zanfini. I was eventually hoping that we could actually turf that field. It was a wonderful field. It had enough seating to accommodate approved GNT and state tournaments. It was actually available for us for revenue generation. And, you know, last week I received a shock when I got a call that the stands had been destroyed and torn down. Now, that's 30% of the stands. To my knowledge, most of the council up here was unaware of this. I, I wasn't aware of it. I'm not even sure if we had, you know, approval from legal counsel to destroy those stands. To me, it's a township asset worth in excess of $100,000. And the reality is we can no longer host tournament games or generate revenue with that field, which kind of stinks. My understanding is it's also for additional parking for, in my eyes, a misplaced dog park, which originally was supposed to be located in Fairway Park. Correct me if I'm wrong. I love dogs. I have several pets over the years and I still have a cat. Why would we locate a dog park in an extremely busy street like Division Avenue? Direct sunlight boggles my mind. I'm not even considering the, the hazard from foul balls, which I know we, we have an issue over there that we actually have to put up some netting, some additional netting. There's some, you know, a young lady called us in reference to that as well. Can somebody explain to me why, why the stands were destroyed and not moved? Why some of the council members were not consulted in this? How will the police eventually, you know, deal with those parking spots? Because they're right by the high school and how are we going to end up policing them? Because, you know, high school students need places to park and they're going to park. The, the last thing is how do we protect our residents' dogs in 90-degree weather with no shade from, and also from a possible traffic hazard? I mean, and I'm just, I'm kind of bothered right now and I'm kind of a little bit, you know, saddened by what happened there. Yours?
There were several questions in there.
Okay.
I think I can answer most, maybe not all. And certainly, if any members of the council want to jump in, certainly feel free. So, the, the first question, or I guess, I did send out a memo to the entire council.
I saw that, like, kind of...
Okay.
Late.
It was a short notice, but in fairness to me, the email went out to the entire council prior to any screws going anywhere near the, the bleachers. So, the concept of, we'll, we'll get back to how the dog park got to the dog park, but the concept of the dog park was that if we eliminated one of the stands, with the exception of the ramp, we would be able to create a better, safer environment to get into the park. And that would be, and it would eliminate people that were driving to the dog park to come in, park somewhere near the tennis court, so to speak, because that's the closest parking spots to the dog park and then have to walk up into an active driveway. So, we wanted to, the, the concept thought behind that was to eliminate the residents with dogs walking up into an active driveway. And the way we could do that, obviously because of the elevation, the elevation is such that it would require a ramp. So, we do have a ramp. To the best of my knowledge, and I've only been here two years, but again, before that, before the construction started on the bleachers, we called the athletic director, we called Dr. Tomko, called the rec department. So, I thought we did our due diligence on the concept. I have no knowledge of any state tournaments being held there, but again, I'm only here two years, so I defer that to anybody else and I know the mayor...
Definitely not in the last year or so.
Well, I know that, right. So, so I think that answers some, but again, I didn't get any feedback, so, and maybe I shouldn't assume that because I sent out an email, everybody gets it and I, I realize that. But the elevation is a concern, so the, the only way you can get from platform A to platform B is if we reuse the existing ramp and build a concrete pad.
Seems like a waste of a lot of money.
Any other questions from the council on that, or any other?
I, I have something. I think it was a very good... Good idea to do a dog park, because I, I have a dog too, but I think it's the location that's not right. And it really isn't right to do it. And, and I think it's near some people's homes and it's not at the right location. And I think that it should have been in a different, in a way.
And, and Councilwoman, I totally respect your opinion, because that's, I mean, that's, that's what we're here. And I guess, not that we vote on issues like that, I mean, you know, I don't think it would ever come to a vote, but I'm, you know, I know that there's members on the council that thought that location was a good location and obviously, there's members on the council that felt that that was a terrible location. So, you know, without voting on every single issue, we try to do our best to try to accommodate, you know. I mean, obviously, we were all excited when we finally were able to put the funding together and actually build a, a dog park, because Belleville never had a dog park. So, that's one feather in our cap, that Belleville, New Jersey now has a dog park. And for all the dog lovers, having, going from zero to one is not bad. It's, you know, we're off to a good start.
20% improvement.
And at the end of the day, if we get lucky with that most recent grant that we spoke about at the last council meeting, we're applying for up to, I think, $500,000. I don't know if we'll get $500,000, but we applied for up to 500 and that's for additional funds to build a second dog park.
That dog park's...
It's not near a people's home.
Well, the Fairway Park one is, is, that was...
That Fairway Park is the ideal situation.
Park's not going to cost $500,000.
It was in the wrong location.
No, we're applying, we are applying for the renovation, yes, which includes a dog park.
And if I may, through the chair?
It's the most lively debate we've had in a long time. It's not a dog park.
It's not a debate and, and I...
I want to weigh your neck, so I don't care, yeah.
No, no, and I, and I respect Council, Councilman Rovell's with, with his, his comment on the baseball. Yes, that field is beautiful, is state-of-the-art at that time, nice. I too have been around a long time. Have I noticed, being 15 years recently involved in that, in, in baseball and wrestling and other sports, a lot of the parents do like to hover around the dugouts, which is on the other side, which is home plate.
We watch high school baseball from the sidelines.
Right. But, but that said, my, I mean, I would love with the sports complex, and I say sports complex, that we here on this council are building, I mean, we're talking a beautiful complex. I would love to utilize that space in a whole nother aspect going down the road. I mean, you call a complex a complex? I mean, that's, you know, I would, down the road, I would look to actually have moved them also to stands and use, utilize that space for just more space for the complex and the children of Belleville. Because in the past 15 years, I'll say 12 years, I can count on two hands, maybe one hand, that the people that actually sat in the stands, so I, I'm not, I'm not disputing it.
I know I've been there more times than you and, and I will dispute that.
Okay.
And I'll, and I'll be honest with you. When that was originally designed, those stands were supposed to be along the first base line, so why didn't we move them? Why did we burn 150 to whatever, $1,000 down the toilet without even telling us? That, that kind of really upsets me. And I'm sure there's people in this town that are going to be upset by... And I'm sure there's people in this town that are going to be upset by that, too.
All right, so can I weigh in, maybe? Since we're going to keep the topic on the dog park. I was 50/50 on that location. I agree with you, and I agree with you. That location wasn't ideal, in my opinion. But what nobody seems to be talking about is the fact that we touched grant money for that, and we had a park that's not handicap accessible. So, therefore, I think the manager made a good call to use the ramp that was part of stands that, in my opinion, most people don't sit on, and use that ramp to actually get handicap people in and make, again, we touched state grant money, and we built the park that wasn't handicap accessible. And I, too, by the way, would have liked shade. And Councilman, when you started this off, you said, correct me if I'm wrong, and I will correct you because you are wrong, I don't believe they were removed for additional parking. Is that correct, Mr. Icone?
Not additional parking.
Thank you. That's what Councilman Rovell said.
You know, that's why I'm not sure why...
But that's why we shouldn't listen to people on the street. We should ask the manager.
No, no, but then, why do we need to remove them all? We could have made, we could have taken that space that we had, made a ramp, and done something else, rather than removing $100,000, $150,000 worth of stands and burning them. You know, why didn't we just move them? I'm kind of at a loss with that. I mean, it, you know, it's just bizarre.
I read the email. I think the email said that we were reusing the ramp to make it handicap accessible to remove that berm. But, okay, that's neither here nor there. Anything else on this? Good. Okay, next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. So, I just want to congratulate the school district. They had a great grand opening in Claremont Field. I think that we have done, we...
Together.
I did, too. I think we collectively, as a township, have done a great, I say township, meaning the municipality and the Board of Ed, to greatly upgrade our recreational facilities. And the opening of Claremont Field certainly is a step in that direction, as we all know the township's under construction up at the municipal stadium complex. To dovetail that, I attended a groundbreaking, I think Councilman Rovell was there as well, of the First T program, talking about upgrading recreational facilities. There's a $5 million-plus improvement to the Hendrix Golf Course, which is nice, the county did that. But what the county also did is building the First T program, which will allow our children to get pro instruction there. It's a game changer for us. Again, it's another service, another recreational facility. We didn't do it, but it's here in Belleville now, just like we didn't do the Board of Education stuff, but it's all happening collectively, and I think it's going to benefit our children for time to come.
What you were saying, Mayor, along those same lines, that whole First T program, I guess it was Megan, the young lady who played in the LPGA? She was in that program in Newark, did a phenomenal job. I think this is a great thing for Belleville.
I watched her that entire weekend play, and during that national television tournament all weekend, they kept mentioning the Essex County First T program. Most people don't realize it's only in Weekwake Park until now. Now, it's in Belleville. 500 to 600 children, Belleville, Nutley, Bloomfield, suburban Essex, will be able to get pro instruction, pro equipment. It's a game changer, absolute game changer. Speaking of children, summer camp program is, registration is open. We also have, I believe, some summer opportunities for children as well, either summer camp or DPW. Also, with regard to our children, online registration for fall rec programs available. Check our website for that. Community garden registration. Now, we have a community garden up at Fairway Park. Plots are now available. They're $25 each. Information is on our website. Our next council meeting will be our reorg meeting. It's going to be July 1st at noon. And then, Councilman Rovell mentioned, it's here in my update, and I did reach out to the manager and the rec today with regard to finding out if we can issue proclamations for the U-13 travel soccer team. They won a championship this past Saturday on June 19th, defeating Sareville 3 to 1. And our 8U travel baseball went undefeated. They won the league championship on Sunday after a 15 to 1 win against West Orange. So, I stand in agreement with Councilman Rovell if we can get those teams in here for proclamations now that, now that in-person meetings are open. That would be great. Upcoming events, the manager mentioned, this coming Thursday, high school graduation. This coming Saturday, our Belleville Police Department is going to take on our Belleville Fire Department in charitable softball game. All proceeds go back to a nonprofit, which then reinvests them back into the municipality. July 4th, I believe, Mr. Manager, we're going to repeat what we did last year, which is going to be potentially yoga in the park in the morning, and then a ceremony with our veterans. We're hoping we could do that at the location that was held hundreds of years ago at the Dutch Reformed Church, but you'll have to update on the status of that. Summer concerts, first time Belleville's really having a summer concert series. That information's currently on our website, currently on social media. We have done summer concerts in the past. This is the first time we're doing a series, eight-week-long series. These are not little mom-and-pop bands that we got coming in. It's a very collective and eclectic group. It's a very diverse group that's coming in, eight weeks long. We are even in talks with the manager to potentially, on the first week, July 8th, maybe do something, I'll say patriotic, and we're also in talk to maybe end late August with something also patriotic. You can read into that what that very well may mean, because I will announce next that we are not having a 4th of July program this year. Both was a planning scheduling issue with regard to open space and capacity issues. They have since been restricted, I'm sorry, lifted, a little too late for us, because everybody in the state's trying to book the same two or three firework companies, plus our municipal stadium complex is under construction right now. So, that made it very difficult. But again, I think we are in talks with the manager to potentially do something patriotic for the first concert on July 8th, and maybe ending the season in the same patriotic way. Enough hints? I think so. Next up is July 14th. We're having a blood drive. Info is on the website. As always, check our library. Our library has a whole bunch of events. ESL Summer Learning is happening, Outdoor Storytime. We have all kinds of interesting things. I just saw that we're having a Peru Independence Day celebration there, and we're also having something new I never heard of, a teddy bear sleepover. So, Mr. Manager, bring your favorite teddy bear to the library, and on July 29th, your teddy bear can sleep over. I don't know what the teddy bear does. I don't know if there's chaperones involved, boys and girls separated. I don't know, but there's more information on the library website. That concludes my mayor's report. We do not have any approval of minutes, correct?
Correct, Mayor.
You're on.
I'm on.
Next item on our agenda is communications.
Request received in the River of Life Church for permission to conduct an outdoor worship service on Sunday, June 27th, from 9:30 to 1:30.
Okay.
B, request received in the Belleville Nutley Kiwanis Club for permission to use the Belleville Senior Center on Thursday, September 30th, for a blood drive from 11 to 8. And C, request received in the residents of Overlook Avenue to conduct a block party on Saturday, June 26th, from 11 to 8.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is ordinances. Ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-6A, stop sign intersection designated.
Make a motion. We have a motion made in second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Number two, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-2.2, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Number three, an ordinance to amend Chapter 27, Section 13, Part I of the codified ordinances entitled towing and storage.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion made in second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance number four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Section 31.1 of the codified ordinances entitled administration, police department fees.
So moved, dude.
Motion made in second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Next, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one, for public hearing and ordinance amending Chapter 23, zoning to permit illuminated channel letter signs in the township of Belleville and the county of Essex, New Jersey.
Need a motion to open public hearing.
Open public. Second.
Motion made in second of public hearing. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mr. Frantantonio, I'm going to have you come forward, sir, and just, somebody make sure, chief, can you make sure that microphone is on?
Good evening. Yeah, first, what exactly is an illuminated channel letter sign?
So, the best way I could explain it to you is that when you are down, and this is basically correcting an error, I believe, when you're down on Main Street at that strip mall that's down there, it's not the light box sign like this that's lit up and it's got maybe plastic or plexiglass in it. These are the nicer, the channel letters, where there's a logo, where there's a name, and every letter is separate. So, if you're down on Main Street, every single, we made this happen, every single storefront on Main Street in the, where the new light bulb's going to go, every single storefront has the nicer letters, the channel letters that are separated and individually lit. There's about 10 vacancies down there, and for some reason, when we edited our zoning ordinances, they were prohibited instead of included, and this is a correction to that.
Why would it, what do you mean prohibited?
It was in, in my, I'm trying to find it. For some reason, I don't... Table, table. Kyle, I don't have that one. I have all the tabled stuff. I don't have that one. It's, the wording of it was...
The zoning one?
Yeah. So, what happened was, it was called, "All signs listed as permitted signs are prohibited are not limited to the following." So, they should have been permitted, and they were prohibited. That was the thing. The word was put in there as prohibited. It should have been permitted, because we went through great effort at that strip mall specifically to make sure when Buddha Bowl came in, we wanted their logo to be in nice the shape of the logo, and it's lit. Otherwise, you get a big box like this, and it's backlit. We made every single store do that, yet the stores that aren't open yet, if this stands, would have to go back to the ugly light box sign. We don't want that.
Are these flashing lights?
No.
No.
Nothing going to be flashing?
No. No, it's the nicer, it's the nicer sign.
Okay.
Mr. Joes? Yeah, but we need you here on the mic.
Is there a particular size of the sign? The reason I'm bringing that up, because we have a sign ordinance that says you can only put so much in a window.
Yeah.
Is there a particular size, a maximum size?
Yeah, it matches, there's a ratio. It can't be oversized. There's definitely, I don't know what it is offhand, but it's definitely a ratio.
It's a percentage of the front of the building.
Anybody else? Hearing none, seeing none, and intending motion to close.
Motion to close, move for final adoption. Second.
Motion made in second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Take note, Bart.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
No.
Rovell?
No.
Strumalo Burke?
No.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
It's defeated.
Okay. Next item?
Want to take it off the table?
Don't understand that one at all. Anybody?
Make a motion. One off the table? Make a motion to pull ordinance number one off the table. Second.
We have a motion made in second to take ordinance one off the table. This is a vote to just take it off the table.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Make a motion to open for public hearing.
Motion made in second to open public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mr. Frantantonio?
Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the planning board meeting last night because I was at the Board of Ed meeting last night. I would have liked to see it. In regards to its development, it's, a little bird lands on my shoulder, and it appears there may be some political influence in this development, possibly from you, Mr. Mayor, and all that. And one of the things if I'm...
Who'd it be from? Who else would it be from?
Yeah, well, I'm glad you admitted. So, the, one of the things that I've read or heard there is something, if the, one of the stipulations is, there's going to be some store, some retail there, correct? And if they're not rented in a year, they can be used for recreation or Board of Ed? Is that correct, or am I hearing wrong?
I don't normally answer birds that land on your shoulder. I mean, I would be here all day if I did.
Well, I'm asking you directly.
That you have about that.
I'm asking you directly.
Do you have a redevelopment council here, or anybody that drafted the agreement? The agreement's about 80 pages long. I think there was a stipulation that the retail could be used, if the school district needed it, for pre-K, but I don't think there's anything in there about giving it away or free or anything like that.
All right. It's getting out of control now. I mean, between this, number one, the hiring of one of your friends last night, it appears between the council and the Board of Ed, we now have the Better Belleville Employment Agency. But this is unbelievable. We've operated our school system and within the confines of existing building, all of a sudden, we got offices all over town.
I need, I need your comment to stay on, on the actual pilot or on the financial agreement.
Yeah, all right, then I'll bring it up there. Yeah, what is this pilot? Because are we giving a tax abatement? Pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, that's tax abatement?
I call it a payment in lieu of taxes, not a tax abatement.
The developer testified, I was at that meeting when he went, that he did not want a tax abatement and he wasn't gonna ask for one when he initially came before the board and got the initial approval. Now, why are we giving tax abatements?
Well, to pilot.
Why are we giving a pilot? He's on the public record saying he did not want one and wasn't going to seek one.
I do need your comments to stick to the financial agreement.
Yeah, well, that's a financial agreement. Why are we giving to him when he said he didn't want or need one? Was that after you got involved, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Frantantonio, I'm not gonna respond to personal accusations.
It was, not an accusation, it was a question.
I'm not gonna respond to the personal question.
If I have to draw a question mark in midair after it?
No.
Okay. Well, something's wrong.
There are seven of us up here, though. You should know that.
Something's wrong in Belleville and these tax abatements are gonna come back to kill us. They're ready, go look at Bloomfield Center, all that big development, all the empty stores in Bloomfield. They're having trouble renting them now. Go look at Montclair, people can't afford 3200 for a two-bedroom apartment.
Frantantonio, I need your comments to stay on the financial agreement.
Yeah, we'll stop this stuff. We gotta stop these financial agreements. We, the taxpayers, we're getting, paying the taxes, fully tax to subsidize these developments and it's got to end.
Thank you.
So I hope you oppose this tonight. Guys didn't want a pilot, all of a sudden now, getting it. And it seemed to be after you got, and I think you're getting involved a little too much in all these deals, Mr. Mayor. Remember, you're only a legislature.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just one question, well, two. What's the term of the abatement? Or pilot, whatever you wanna call it?
Pilot is 25 years.
25 years. As you know, I opposed this before because I still think that we're doing overdevelopment. I mean, you have this project here, but, and I said it from the beginning, that was initially a warehouse. It was rezoned for residential. It should have stayed at a warehouse. You would have had a less impact in our school systems. For the less residential, the less impact, least amount of impact we would have had on town. 268 units, I just, just can't digest it. I mean, when, when is it gonna end? That's my question. When is it gonna end? Or are we just gonna go, every single lot is gonna be developed into housing? Your best abatements are what's going on in the valley right there in Walter Kitty property. Those are abatements. Five-year abatement, 20, 40, 60, 80, 100%. This doesn't help the taxpayers. Tell me how, how do rentals help me or anybody who owns property? How does it help me?
Mr. Joes, I've explained this ad nauseam over the course of three years. You, you just don't understand pilots.
I understand it. No, no, you, you don't understand that not everybody wants that project. Just be, that may be, this development is probably your own personal view, like West New York, Union City, which you always touted, Jersey City. You're trying to turn that into a congested area like the other municipalities are. I don't like them.
I'm gonna say the same.
I don't like them.
I'm gonna tell Mr. Frantantonio, there are seven of us up here. I can't be the only one that votes and this can't be my project. This can't be my pilot.
You're right, you're right. But you know what? It's always, not everybody, there's always one person who has the idea. That's the question, whose idea was it? To bring everybody on board and sell them that way. And you know, I've mentioned this before, I'm gonna mention it one more time. Jersey City is no longer allowing those pilot programs.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public commenting. Mr. Del Gersio.
Tilly O'Jerry Del Gersio, 8 Grove Street, Belleville. On the pilot itself, as he mentioned about the one at Walter Kitty, it's for 20%, I believe, in the second year. And then it goes up 40. Every year it goes up. How many years is it for each percentage? And how does it go up on this one?
So it's, it's not apples to apples. So Walter Kitty is an area in need of rehabilitation. The maximum is that, is five years on that. And you're right, it goes from zero to 20 to 40 to 60, 80 to 100.
Right.
This is not an area in need of rehabilitation. This is an area in need of redevelopment. So this, and most people still don't understand pilots because, and I'm not saying you.
No, I understand the pilots. I'm just asking for the percentages.
I'm not saying you. I'm not saying you. I'm just saying, most people don't, still don't understand pilots. They call them abatements. They think that it's a subsidy. It's not. It's a revenue share. So we actually get anywhere between 11 and 14% of the gross revenue of these developments. That comes to us. So when people stand there, not you, when people stand there and say that we're giving away an abatement or we're, we're giving away, that's absolutely not true. We make a heck of a lot more money in the first 25 years than we ever would on traditional taxes.
Is this tied into rentals?
Twelve rentals.
A percentage of rentals?
We get a gross, the municipality, it's, it's a revenue share. It's not an abatement, it's a revenue share.
I'm not arguing that point.
We get say 12%.
My question is, if they're not rented, do you still get the money or no?
No.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, I understand this goes up as a progressive way, the same as the other one did.
Does.
And my question is, for how many years and how much percentage is it for so many years? And then how does it go up?
I don't know if Mr. Iacono has that answer, if he has our professionals here, in general.
Well, that's, that's the agreement.
Yeah, in general.
Each agreement is different.
In general, if it's a 25-year pilot, it might, for the, might be 11% for the first five years. So then you allow them to rent up and then it goes to 12% for the next five. It state, it staggers up from anywhere between 11 and 14%. Maybe every five years, it ticks up a percentage.
It's a progressive scale, but the thing is, once you reach 25 years, there's, it goes to regular taxes.
Right, and we get a heck of a lot less money.
I'm not arguing that point. I'm still asking the question of the percentages and how many years each percentage is. It's in the agreement. If you have the agreement here, it should be set.
We got it.
Yeah, I could answer that. Mr. Mayor, for, it is 10% of the adjusted annual gross income and that's all 25 years unless the annual gross income really goes up. So for years one through 15, it's that 10% of annual gross income. Then you go into stage two, they call it. Years 16 to 21, and it's either 10% of the gross income or 20% of the taxes otherwise due, whichever is greater. So the township gets the benefit of the greater of those two numbers. And that's the pattern it goes after that.
Go ahead.
Stage three, now we're into years 22 and 23 of the 25-year. And that's, again, 10% or with 40% of the amount of taxes otherwise due, whichever is greater. So the township gets the greater of those two numbers.
Right.
Then into 20, year 24, it's 10% or 60% of the taxes, whichever is greater. The final year is 10% of adjusted gross income or 80% of the taxes otherwise due. Again, whichever is the greater number. And then after that, you go into.
So really, so really, up until the 21st year, if I'm correct, the most anybody would pay is 20% of the taxes that would normally be for that property. Am I correct? To the 21st year, because you said first 15, it's 10%. There is no 20% involved. Am I correct? It's a flat 10?
Well, no, that's not true. If the, if 10% of the adjusted gross income is more than 20% of the taxes otherwise do.
No, I'm talking about for the first 15 years.
You just said after.
No, no, listen to me. From, from the 16th year to the 21st, that's where you threw the 20% in. But before then, there's no mention of 20%.
Year one through 15, it's 10% of the adjusted gross in, annual gross income.
And no, no, in lieu of taxes?
There's, there's no.
But the taxes would be, I'm talking about the 20%.
There's not a neither or.
Either or, exactly. It's just a flat 10% of the, of the revenue of, of the rents. And if they don't rent, you know, that's it. I mean, the guy is guaranteed that if he doesn't rent the place, he's protected. Now, from the 15th year.
Well, I think he's got.
Yeah, from the 15th year to the 21st year, the most it is, is 20% of the taxes that a person would normally pay for that property.
No, no, it, it's.
The most. Unless the rents are higher.
If the adjusted gross, if the annual gross income is higher than.
Than 20% of what the taxes would normally be.
The annual gross income.
Yes, I agree. And then from then on, it goes to 40, 60, and 80. But technically, up to the 21st year, there is nothing comparing it to what the taxes would normally be.
Up to the 15th year? That's, all that stage.
But then it would be only 20% up to the 21st year. From the 16 to 21. 16 to 21, you mentioned that, not me.
No, no, I did, but it's not, 20% isn't your max.
No, 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 I didn't say it was the max. I was saying that's the minimum.
Okay.
Am I correct? That's the minimum would be 20% of what the normal taxes would be. And there's no minimum before the 16th year.
Now, you're not realizing, Joes, that even at 20%, we get it all. So traditionally, if they pay 100% traditional taxes, the school district gets a third, county gets a third, we get a third. We get, we get 100% of that 20%.
Um, except for on the land, I understand.
Land's 100% taxed.
Land is 100% and it doesn't go to you, it goes spread out. Am I correct? Only on the land?
You're correct.
Okay. Only on the improvements, it's this agreement.
Exactly.
So the land stays the same forever?
Actually, the land goes up a lot more because now there's a more valuable improvement on it.
Yes, yes, I agree.
We never talked about that.
Well, not only that, land is, land is more valuable because there's only so much of it. Let's put it that way. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public and move for final adoption.
Second.
We have a, a motion to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number two.
Do we wanna leave it there, right?
Uh, duh, 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 duh.
The one for the pathan.
I'm sorry, we're on table. We're on table. I'm sorry. That, we're gonna stay.
You want public, you want public comments?
Next, then the motion open public commenting.
Motion open public, second.
Motion made in second to public comment. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Mr. Frantant, oh, I'm sorry. Mr., we'll let Mr. Frantantonio first. Mr. or Mrs.? Mrs. We'll, we'll let Mrs. go first.
Mrs. goes first. Mrs. always goes first.
Phyllis Frantantonio, Mount Prospect Avenue. I just wanna ask, so well and good you wanna do all these sports complexes that the kids are gonna play in, but there's a lot of kids that do not play organized sports. I hope you leave some open land that they can play a street game on. Because I know, you know, a few kids that just don't like organized sports. Because the complexes, they're locked up, even clear and field by me. I can't even walk around the track yet because they don't open. Everything's locked up. So you need a place where these kids could play and they don't get in trouble. Because then they wind up hanging around and they have no place to go. So I just hope that you put that in here and you think about those kids that don't want organized sports. And there's one other thing I'd like to ask you. I've been reading a lot about a lot of towns in northern New Jersey who put ordinance through or resolutions through not to accept any of this marijuana selling within their borders or growing. And there's a mess in them. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me. I think you have until August, the end of August or the beginning of September, to refuse to do it. We don't need that in our borders. We don't need anymore for anybody to try to get anything because just recently, there was an article in the paper about California. And it's falling with this legalizing the drugs, with marijuana and all. They can't compete with the illegal ones. Because the illegal ones are selling them for less than what they're getting in the store. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Frantantonio.
Thank you. Well, first of all, it's good to hear some council members, a little debate about some of the incompetence and the waste of our taxpayer dollars. Thank you, Mr. Rovell, for starting that debate. I hope you continue to realize what's going on in this town. And then I, through the chair, I'd like to address Mr. Graziano. About a week and a half ago, I had to.
Mr. Frantantonio, you could, you could address me.
Yeah, okay. Well, referring to a comment he made, a couple of things. You changed the ordinance. I had to go into Newark to replace a rotted casing on the top of a second-floor window. And you stated a couple, you changed the zoning ordinance to only three-foot side yards. And you were so happy, so we're giving the people back their land. I don't know if you know what it is, to try to throw up 22 feet and try to put an extension ladder up on the three-foot alleyway, you know, it's impossible. That's just me, a contractor. So I go on the second floor, get some ropes, tie the ladder, tie it to the fence, tie it up there and off. That's just a carpenter trying to place a piece of wood. What about firemen? What about firemen? When you take the, so a fireman trying to get somebody at a second floor in the three-foot alleyway, trying to get it with all his gear and all that, you know? You didn't do anybody any favors. The other thing is, I know as trustee, sacred of a coalition for many years, and we found out, one square foot of grass absorbs six and a half gallons of water in a rainstorm. So now you eliminate that side yard, you make it, that's less land that winds up getting paved and all. The other thing is, not only would I come put the ladder up, people put their garbage cans in the hardware. Not that they had the big brute one. I couldn't even get around the garbage cans in emergency. So you didn't do anybody any favors, you know, by changing the ordinance to only a three-foot side yard.
I think everybody voted on that.
All right.
You could address this all.
Yeah, well, he made the statement how great it was that he's giving people back their land.
And you disagree with that.
It's actually harming people, you know?
When he's done.
Uh, the other thing is, in regards to on the table, well, it's gonna be a little, but the other, with asphalt. We're gonna be paving these streets. Could we use some decent asphalt? We're using a lousy grade. Perfect example, come to my street, about 10 years ago, 12 years ago, they paved our street. They use an RA3 with the big gravel. Then I objected because they were gonna put new gas lines in public service. We begged them, wait. Three months later, they put gas and dig up the new street. The late Edith Defoe and I fought. We called public service. They came in, instead of the patches every 20 feet, eight feet of the east side of the road, they milled it and they paved it. But they used RA1. The night, come and look at it now, it's 10, 12 years later, that eight feet is still real nice, what we do. Because you use the big gravel and the engineers, I think, do this to feather bed to guarantee in six, seven years, they're gonna have to do the street again, right? But the big stones, the water goes in there, it freezes and all falls apart. But it's a perfect example. Look at Mount Prospect Avenue. The eight feet public service did and the ones they've been doing, look at the nice asphalt they're putting down. So you better tell these engineers, we want the better gravel, you know? And the other thing, in regards to the ordinance on the table, regards to the great lawn. We're throwing money like crazy. About six years ago, I opened, I wanted to know how many legal monies we've been throwing at that thing, fighting that thing, which we shouldn't have been fighting it. When I was shocked when I got the thing there, $125,000 in legal fees were paid fighting that. That shouldn't have been bought. We had to hire an attorney, the citizens, to fight that. But here's the Essex County advertisement when they sold that property up there, all right? In regards to what we call the great lawn, "All properties shall be sold as is, whereas bidders are advised that block 540, lots 1C, A, and a portion of 1.02 bidders are advised that block 540, lots 1C, A, and a portion of 1.02 may be subject to redevelopment district zoning. That, the new block numbers on that, when you changed them a few years ago. Essex County should never sold them. The developer was warned in the legal ad, he should never bought them. That was read, the only perpasse of recreation, all right? So, the county should give him his money back. And I heard you said, the last meeting, you tabled it because the applicant's attorney had sent you a letter and all that. You've got to give him his money back, and you've got to get Essex County to pay that man back his money with open space funds. They should never sold the day, uh, so before we go spend, and in six years, I'm sure you spent with probably $200,000 in legal fees. We can't throw anymore at that property.
Thank you, Mr. Frantanton. Your time is up.
All right. But I just wanted, this developer called me, I met with him, and I told him, I'm not getting involved in anything with this. So, I hope you guys know, you know, it's can't, we must preserve the great lawn.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dros.
Oh, what about me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Graziano was, was mentioned, so he has the opportunity to respond if he so wants.
If I may, and thank you for that comment, and with all due respect, Mr. Frantantoni, I did not change the ordinance. It was, it was brought up to me through, as you know, councilman-at-large, I'm all over Belleville, that said, a lot of people, not one voice, a lot of paying residents, taxpayers, love the fact that they got their property back to do a lot more things with it. It wasn't my voice. I was hearing the voices from the community at large. So, it came to the table, it was voted on, and made a lot of people happy. So, I understand and respect your opinion and your voice, but as I sit here and hear, like you hear and everyone else hears in this town, I hear from a lot, at large, not from a small sector of people. So, I'm thankful and with our, with the council that we changed the ordinance and Belleville community is happy. So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dros, miss, thank you, sir. Mr. Dros, you're up.
Yeah, resolution number 14. Is that something new, that you're hiring somebody to do specs, or is it the first time, or is something new?
I'll let the manager answer that.
Just the scavengers.
Just the microphone, sir?
Yeah, so our garbage, our garbage bid, which is solid waste recycling, is up in 60 days, and the bid spec has a very in-depth regulations as far as things that we have to meet. It's just not a simple bid process. So, the council is considering hiring a consultant. That's all they do.
That's they specialize in that field.
That's all they do is garbage, bid specs and recycling. And again, we've had some serious problems with our garbage collection. So, hopefully, this gentleman who's an expert in that field is going to be able to help us write a spec that's going to address the deficiencies that we get every week, that we hear from the.
And save you a lot of time. All right, just another, mayor, on, let's see, December 15, 2020, when we were all on Zoom and we had to write in, I kept asking you a question, I asked you twice on it. I said, it was nice to have, see your neighbor get a position that was not advertised, what would the salary be, who paid for the courses, and when was the position advertised? And you told me I didn't know what I was talking about. Well, that's fine.
I think I said I don't have a neighbor that was hired.
But anyway, and I asked you the same question on 4/13/2021.
Probably gave you the same answer.
You gave me the same answer. You don't know what I'm talking about.
No, my answer was, I don't have a neighbor that got hired.
Yeah, well, well, you know what? And it's ironic, though. Look at this picture. Isn't that your neighbor?
That's not my neighbor.
That was your neighbor at one time.
Oh, as a child.
Oh, okay. But the point I'm bringing up, I wouldn't be here, I'm talking, I'm talking. I wouldn't be here asking you this question if you give me a straight answer. That's all I ask. You forced me to come back and ask you this question.
Your question was a neighbor. I said, that wasn't my neighbor.
Your former neighbor.
If you said former, I probably would agree with you.
But I'm just saying, you made it sound like you don't know the person.
No, I didn't make it sound that way.
It's your own campaign literature. And you know what? And she's, and first of all, she's not your personal secretary, the way.
I never called her that.
No, but the way I see her helping you around, she's a secretary like the town clerk is, as you're, as a secretary. She's not supposed to be doing, it looks to, it gives it the appearance that you're directing her, which you're not supposed to.
Manager's right here, you can, you can refer that personnel issue to the manager.
No, I'm just letting you know.
Don't let me know, let him know.
Because if you direct any employees, you're in violation of the Falkland.
Never heard that before, that's all. Anybody else? Anybody else? Mr. Del Gersio.
Tilly O'Gerry Del Gersio, A Grove Street. I want to thank Mr. Ikonno.
No, he's been getting beat up a little more than me today, I think, so I think he needs it today.
No, I want to thank him.
I know, I know.
Because at the last meeting, if you remember, the meeting before that, I brought up about the intersection of Mill Street and Franklin Avenue. And not only did the county, within a week of this conversation.
I wish you'd thank the county then. What do you think?
Well, no, 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 he called, he told me he was going to call Phil Elijah.
Oh, wow.
County Executive's right-hand man. And within a week, they started fixing things, both on Franklin Avenue and Mill and Giralliman Street and Franklin Avenue. My only question is, I might have misinterpreted what I had mentioned. Are they just putting moving, putting new lights there, or are they expanding the intersection there?
I think it's the handicap ramps and they extended it.
But they're not going to widen the streets?
I think it's just the intersections.
No, the intersections. Are they going to widen the intersection?
Correct.
No, I mean, for there to be a third lane for left turn or right turn.
I think they're adding a lane, no. They're not changing the traffic pattern.
Oh, so we're still going to have the traffic backing up Mill Street in the morning and backing into the park in the evening?
Possibly.
Yes, well, that, that doesn't help. The last, so I think you were actually, the council should ask them to try and expand that intersection because it needs it very badly.
Clearly, there's a good relationship there. I think the manager should.
Well, then, if the board directs him to, I think he will make that request. The last, the last, if you want to make a motion, I have no objection. The last thing I want to mention, am I correct that the ordinance for second reading tonight was voted down?
Yes. Now, that nice strip mall on Main Street that we just approved, the nice Lidle sign, will no longer have the nice channel signs. They will go back to looking like Broadway and Market where you have the light box signs. Thanks to that wonderful collaboration among certain councilmen.
Can I ask a question, probably to the attorney, if he's an expert in land use, which I don't know if he is? Does that then mean that anyone who wants to try and have those lights can make an application to the zoning board?
Yes, I would guess, yeah.
Okay, thank you. This was the one I want to.
The easy way out will be put an ugly light box sign on that nice new strip mall.
No, well, don't look at me. I'm just asking what the, what the legalities are.
Congratulations, council. Now we know why the town looks the way it looks. Anybody else? Motion to close. Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll. Close public comment.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Rovell.
Schumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
So, Kelly, I have five.
Yes, you do.
Six.
Me, too.
Seven. 11.
27.
12.